What's that?
I was looking to see if the camera would throw in there. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, welcome everyone. Looks like all members are in attendance here. Do we have any comments from visitors? Alright, is there an approval of the agenda?
Motion.
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, so you can decide by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Student council reports, I'm guessing those are tables, okay? Old business, approve the following second reading policies. We can do individual motions or one motion, whichever.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 109 to 107.
901?
901.
901.
To 907, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Brian, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. New business, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I ask a question? Is the, are all the, like, volunteer and culture, are they all background checked and everything and all that? So all these have been done?
Those that have, I think they're all returners, so yes, and if not, if they're new, then they're either being done right now or they have been done.
Okay, but they do get all that. So, I mean, I was thinking your question on that.
And I think, like you mentioned volunteers, so people that are volunteering in other places, like at Ripley's side or things like that too, I think they're all background checked as well. So. Alright, is there an approval on the consent agenda? Or a motion, I'm sorry?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holly, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will be abstaining for that one. Motion carries with all members voting yes and one abstention. Okay, and then discussion items. Review and approve the MOU for public health emergency.
Yeah, it's an annual agreement with public health. If there is a disaster, catastrophe, or they need use of school facilities, we've got an agreement in place where we, between myself, the principals, and Steve Schneider will be available to help accommodate as needed. The only time that, if you think back, it was two winters ago, right before Christmas, when daddy sent a lot of power outages. There was one time I lead both of them, and we broke it up their service county office. We didn't have enough people coming, if they didn't have electricity, they wanted, they called people to come in and shower and do that type of thing on our barnets. It was a silent event right before Christmas, so that's the only time I'm aware of that we've used it, but, or that we've had something like that. That's the type of thing that this is more.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holly, is there a second?
Oh, I need it.
Kathy? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Okay, hockey transportation.
Alright, so hockey transportation, how that's worked in the past is, we provide transportation for those students who didn't drive or needed to ride to the Allen Center at Crosby. And then practice was up at Breezy, then they would ride up on the Crosby bus here at Crosby Kids up to Breezy Point. And then that cost was covered by the hockey co-op. The hockey co-op, and it's Pequot Lakes runs that, controls that cooperative. It's been decided that they're not going to pay for that transportation anymore to try and reduce the cooperative price. So the pride with Pequot Lakes saying they no longer want to participate in that cost. Crosby has also said they're not going to pick up the cost. That leaves us, right now, saying the same thing. What would happen, so we'd set up transportation, we have, there's never more than one or two kids or at least last year, maybe the last two years. So we'd get a driver, we'd get a van, get it lined up, and then the kids would find a different ride. So we'd have a driver ready to go. Then what we'd do is we'd get them to ride, and we just take this last year, we'd get them over to Crosby, and then parents, they'd arrange rides home, so. Right now in the cooperative, the co-op's not going to pay for that transportation. The co-op will still pay, the agreement will still pay for all the games, all the events where they're home, while away. As far as transportation goes, this is just referring to the, to the practice transportation, so. I guess they're open for discussion, I said like a board, motion and approval not to provide that award. If the board wants to pick up the total cost, then we have to figure out the logistics of how that would work. But my recommendation is based on the challenges we've had to get drivers, and then when we add drivers to get kids to actually ride, my recommendation is that we let it drop out of the agreement and have the parents find, have the kids and parents line up rides to, which would be Breezy Point this year.
How many kids do we have playing hockey?
I think they're having their meeting tonight. I know they're having a hockey meeting tonight, I don't know how many kids we have. This is just for the varsity day of the hockey, so it's not the, not the peewee little bandits or squirts. Yeah, I don't know if we have a number, I would say this, maybe more of a guess, maybe four or five kids, but many of them are of age to drive, they don't take us up on our transportation. Where this typically comes into place, if we have a younger kid moving up who doesn't drive, then they need transportation.
Do we have this predicament with other sports, like the golf co-op, how do we handle that?
Golf, we have a coach here, so when you go to, so we have a coach driving. Often if there's a vehicle available.
Yeah, the last, yeah, the last spring, the golf, they had to drive themselves.
I don't think we had.
To Crosby.
Can't remember, we had a driver issue in the spring, or we had a vehicle issue in the spring, but, that's one that, well, and Mike Stotz did a coach with us last year, so that would have been part of the two. So we had a coach to drive, so.
Yes, I look at hockey as it's a private club event, basically, till ninth grade, when they move into high school league. So these families have already been able to transport their children and are in that mode as it is throughout that entire timeframe, so. I can see, especially if we're not utilizing it. Most of the kids that do need that are, I mean, they're usually going into 10th grade, so even if they need it, it might only be a portion of the season for some of them, so.
And this is just practices, you said?
Yeah.
I, I will support your recommendation. Personally, I think if there was an issue that came up, then I would hope that those families that would be affected would come forward and may be willing to consider something like a reimbursement for mileage if there was, you know, some parameters and a designated driver and some things like that. So I would be willing to look at something if the circumstances were different. But for now, I will support the recommendation personally. Anybody else?
I just text Jason Klein to see if he knew how many kids we had signed up.
Yeah, it would be one thing if there was a group of kids that really were utilizing it and needed it, but it doesn't sound like, it doesn't sound like it's ever worked out very good.
So it's been, I don't know if challenge is the right word, it's been hitting us at best, and then the other thing is that all three and four that signed up are looking at budget cuts, so it's always a few bucks against that, a big cost, but always trying to figure out where they can save some funds in the cooperative. So happening right now is all, everything gets billed to Pequot Lakes, and then they bill back the total cost of the program and the practice transportation, it's figured in on that. And basically, Pequot Lakes is saying, we don't, our kids don't get cancer in Pequot Lakes, so. Transported with that.
I do, when I was in high school, that was a problem they were having, instantly forced the kids to ride a practice bus. If we're going to put this bus together, then all kids must ride the bus, and then that became a new problem too, so.
Is this similar to, like, the JD and the varsity boys' basketball right now, where they're going to St. Cloud and going places that they find no transportation? Is this similar to?
I would say it's probably a league or some they're doing, so that would not be considered a high school league. The difference would be is this is a, this is a high school league sponsor, that could be, Wednesday nights is not.
And obviously with practices, our other sports, our practices are held in town, right? So we're not paying anybody to attend basketball practice in Aiken or football practice in Aiken or things like that, so.
That's your boys growing themselves, your last couple of boys have all grown themselves. Last year, we had three girls that didn't need transportation. So what if your boys and girls aren't getting, letting those out of the equation?
Is there any, God forbid something would happen to those students transporting themselves to practice? How does that affect us if something were to happen?
It'd be similar to when we had, we had parents signing off, and we have the parents saying that they're, they know they got to get transported via transportation practice. Kind of like we had, what kind of like we do now if a student rides home with a parent from the event. You know, we'd have, so if.
They would sign a waiver.
Sign a waiver, and they were riding to practice with someone's own.
Isn't that kind of similar, though, to tennis? I mean, they're driving over there and they're putting kids in their cars and driving them over, and football players.
Over together.
Yeah, or driving across town.
Just across town, yeah.
Yeah, it's longer, but, I mean, we're still letting them out from one to the other.
So they're just getting themselves to the practice spot on board.
So happens on the bus if, on games. So if the game is going, let's say, to the west, and the bus, whatever's, turn it is the drive, starts in Aiken, goes to Crosby, picks up kids in Aiken, picks up kids in Crosby, picks up kids in Pequot Lakes, and then heads west. If the game's east of us, then they start, they just reverse it, you know, so. So that's how they get.
So does Crosby ever have to drive?
Yeah. They do. They might always be in the middle of pickup, so.
Do those propane buses run anywhere?
I like Cindy's idea of helping out if there's, like mileage reimbursement, et cetera, if there's anybody in need, or just be accommodating if we can, and.
Now, there's girls, though, like you said last year, so that needs transportation.
There were three girls that would have, like, it wasn't all the time.
They're juniors, I think, this year, so. They're all driver's licenses.
See, like, the girls' hockey players are a little bit younger, I don't know if that's, you know, the boys generally speak, are all sophomores, juniors, seniors, very seldom sophomores. I think some of the younger girls were playing up last year. I don't know if that'll happen this year. I'm not sure yet. Kind of, right, so, anyway.
I think we're ready to catch 22 here, because on one hand, you know, we want to provide transportation, but if we provide it and then nobody shows up, we've just wasted money.
If it was in the contract, it'd be a driver of $2, $2 if they show up and nobody's there, you know, so.
Wasn't there a professor there?
No, they're usually bantams. They just are, in the scope of schools. It's usually sophomores enough. Do you need a motion?
Can we get a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to go forward, Dan's recommendation to discontinue the transportation, the hockey practice.
Motion on the table, is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Next is administrative reports, board member reports.
We've seen a lot of each other, haven't we, on the shoulders? Anything new?
Alright, committee reports, finance and facilities.
I did not make that one.
I made it.
I made it.
Do you have that, Dan?
I got it. You want me to run with it? I don't want to take any of the limelight away from you guys. We went over the updated facilities list, looked at things that had been done, and we're still kind of in the process. Had to done 23, 24, looking at 24, 25, what's kind of in the hopper, what's coming up. We talked about football field maintenance. Steve's been working with Ritters and talking with the city that after the season, we had some black dirt, had the field roll, and then, I always forget what they call it. They go through it with the, punch holes into the grass.
Area.
Area, there we go, thank you. Area the field, and spread the grass on it, and then depending if we get any rain or not, sounds like the city's agreed to allow us to hook up the pumps of water, get it a bit wet before the, before the fall, try to get everything settled in before winter shows up, and depends a little bit. The boys are playing football tomorrow night in Misabi. If they win, in order for them to host another game, even if they win, the number eight seed would have to beat the number one seed in the section, and that does happen. But once we know after Tuesday night if there's a potential for, if there's a home game, then Steve will coordinate that with Ritters and his crew and Lon and the city to get things done there, so. SRO officer, we did not, the city did not get the funding for that. That was going to cost more than what we had anticipated to begin with. The city was looking at some other grants, they had to visit more with Colter and the city to see if they're still willing to, to fund it. And all of this is going to cost us, a dollar more. It would cost us substantially more than what we had talked about, or we had paid last time around to do the various things that go into that. Kind of at the committee was, we weren't willing, it was $30,000, $32,000. Whereas the last time around, it was nine and a half or 10 the first year. So it was quite a bit more, and again, with where we're at, and that was if we had the funding. Without that, it would, could be more. So I had to connect with Colter again and see what they're going to do with this to honor it for the year. But the thought, and Brian and Don speak up, and thought was at the, at the meeting that, as nice as it is to have the SRO, being we're in a state of budget cuts, this might be more costly than, than we want to spend at this point. But I'll, I had a chance to connect with Colter recently. Any questions on that? We have robotics, Jason Henke's taken on the robotics. We reached out to a couple of businesses and got some funding. He's written two grants, and there were, well, we know how grants work, right? But one of the grants to NASA that he submitted through First Robotics, the First Robotics guys say, hey, that's really a well-written grant, so there's probably some good thing of having an English teacher as a, as a coach writing your grants. We're open to keep moving forward with that. He's posted some signs and reached out to kids, trying to get interest. It's a matter of, I got some letters from local businesses, I just had a chance to get about, or when he's done with football, we're hoping both of us to get together and reach out to some area businesses also to support the program, so. Looks like that's heading in a good direction, so. And then we talked about the building project, we have a few things later on, I know, which we can talk about there, so.
Okay, thank you. Egg meeting?
Egg, I can handle that.
I say miss that one.
You missed it, Dan, it was an exciting meeting, and as always, there is something for every student and everyone in the community in the egg and mechanical part of the school. Everyone could benefit from it, so first of all, the, they received through a, they received $5,000 from the Aiken Fire Department, and they used it to purchase a lot of safety supplies, so I wash stations, gloves, aprons for welding, goods. Oh, I'm sorry, $10,000.
Was this after they came in and put the fire out in the fax department? And then they were like, we need to get rid of some safety equipment.
It is unrelated to that. So, yeah, I had that wrong, so that's another different. So $10,000 in funding from the Aiken Fire Department last year for a variety of shop things. The latest purchases were all safety equipment, which is a.
Really nice.
Great, very well needed. So, run into problems, space, the frontier in the CTE area, they're realizing that space is at a premium there, and they really can't expand their programs much. They've moved things, they've remodeled, they've hung stuff on walls, and they're, they're at where they're at, so. In discussion with Mr. DiPaolo, he wants to set up a tour for the board to come visit all the shop spaces and take a look at all the equipment. So that was it. So, Rocco attended some training over the summer, which was really good, obtained a certification. They're working on, he submitted some grants, they did get $5,000 from Perkins for veterinary science, and they're utilizing that in the classroom already. He submitted grants request now for a StarLab four-by-four plasma table and plasma cover. That's going to be huge if they can get that. Also submitted a grant request for the EETC for electrical testing kits, so they can learn electronics, so that's a different grant than, than the plasma cover. And then he submitted a grant request for these virtual training setup for learning how to operate skid steers and forklifts. And if you go through that, those learning modules, you become certified as an operator of that equipment, while in high school, which is big, so. They're finishing the third welding class. They're planning a trip to, Rocco had a lot of training this last summer at Alexandria Tech, and with his connections there, he's going to take students there on November 5th to look at their facilities, and there's quite a few Aiken students attending Alexandria Tech starting this fall, so really great, since as like he said, he almost started crying at the awards ceremony last year, the, last spring, because he realized about 50% today can graduate, seniors are all going to technical college now, so, super awesome. Let's see, agriculture, they're moving ahead. It's going to be three teams echoing, small animal veterinary team, 14th floriculture, and AICNEC. They had a, kind of a night where FFA alumni met with the current FFA kids, and said that was really awesome. That happened like a week ago. Well, two weeks ago. Yeah, hit everything, so those are all the high points, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Duckland?
He's not here, he's out doing elementary principals conference today in the morning.
Mr. Mars?
Yeah, Rocco's doing great things. He's shaking and moving all the time, he's always applying for a grant, so that's fantastic.
I will add, he said the students that, in his courses are fantastic this year.
They are, yep. We have a good, good group of kids. It's been really fun. We have conferences coming up this week, on Thursday night and Friday morning, and then we have a half-dotted day at the high school Friday afternoon that will be focusing on a standards alignment and identification of needs. Peer leaders that have been working, and they'll begin meeting with our mentees at the end of the month if they pair up with some seventh graders and some identified eighth graders that might need a little bit more peer support. So they meet at least once a month, sometimes more than that. So that is a fantastic program that our, our teachers, Mr. Richters, kind of has that schedule in charge, and so with eighth hour going away, they created a different schedule where kids kind of are still going in, in homeroom or in other classes. So it worked last year where they rotated through, like October was first hours, and the next meeting was second hour, and the next meeting was third hour, so they weren't missing the same hour every, every time they imagined, that seemed to work just fine.
Is that like the peer helpers program?
Yep.
I am proud to say I was in the very first group of the Aiken High School peer helpers.
Were you?
Many moons ago.
I just love that. It's so great to see these seniors, juniors, and seniors walking around with these kids that are looking up at them, you know, they're in awe of them, and they, you know, when they see them in the hall, they're weeping, and, you know, if there's anybody having kind of a behavior issue in a hallway, oh, no, you don't act like that, that's not how, you know, so it's, it's fun to see that. Really good. We had, I just want to share, we got an email from the University of Minnesota. Scott Miller changed from CLC to the University of Minnesota this year due to licensing things. We decided to switch his, and got program approval so he could teach from the University of Minnesota for college credit. And they sent us an email, Dan and I, an email last week, and it was really interesting. They kind of showed you how successful our 16 kids were that took this class last year, and I was just really shocked at how much money that class saved our families. $35,000, over $35,000 for those 16 kids to take that class at the high school instead of going through the OBM. And I just thought that was fantastic. So it was, it was just really cool to, 64 credits were earned through the OBM last year through our school, so I thought that was really cool.
In just that one class, right?
In just that one class, yeah.
What class was it?
Psychology.
Yeah, I've oftentimes said I would love to see the numbers on that. I know my family was 85 credits, that's a chunk of change. It's like a house.
It is. We're really trying to figure out how we can do an AA degree at school with what we, you know, and come up with a course program. Andrea Rusk, the high school principal in Brainerd, is looking at doing that, and so I'm trying to figure out how we can maybe meet with them and do that as well through Aiken, because I think that's so beneficial for kids, no matter where they're going, if they can have the opportunity to have an AA, that would be so beneficial.
And not only the 85 credits for my family, but all of their, they're in very different fields, and all of their schools accepted all of those credits.
That's fantastic.
So it wasn't like, oh, we're not really going to count this one because it was here. No, they transferred in and used every single credit towards their very different degrees.
Yeah, it's so exciting when kids come back. We have lots of kids on break right now. They have this week off, and so they came in at different times and said hi. Couple of girls walked by this morning and said, hi, we're going to go see music quick. They were helping with magicals, and it was, it was really fun for them to say, you know, all of the credit college classes that we've taken were so beneficial, and they've helped us so much.
Oh, yeah, it's a great program.
It is.
Don't have to leave the school.
I know, it's just wonderful. Anyways, we had the Interactive Career Fair, that was a fantastic, beautiful day. Kids enjoyed it, we had kids from Hill City, from Crosby, from McGregor that came and joined our seventh through 12th grade students, and so it was really fun. We had colleges, we had a culinary school, I mean, we had, all over the place, small businesses and less electric and almost every. um, almost every business that we possibly could from Aiken and Miss Ron communities and schools. So it was really fun for kids to go and visit and see. We, um, October third, we had changed the outcome presentation for our students in seventh through twelfth grade. And it was more about being aware of opioid addiction and kind of drug use. And so they did a pre and a post survey of them. The post survey, I thought this was pretty good. They shared some of the data with us and the impact was ninety-two percent of our students felt more informed about current risks related to substance use following their program. So I thought that was good. Uh, they had good discussions. We had a student that came up and, you know, really spoke about where he was at in his life. Um, so that was really cool. Um, and then some of the kids said that, one of the students said this program is great. It really opened up our eyes to what is actually happening versus what we think happens. And what some students joke about. And I thought that was really, really good to think about what they're hearing and what they think is true and what, you know, so I think the more we have presentations like that, the more it sets in what reality is and not what they maybe think is happening or going on. Um, Avery took their fall field trip to Duluth on October eleventh. They saw Glen Sheen, Canal Park and the Baum Museum. Um, so they had a good day, it was a beautiful day too. We've had really beautiful weather. Um, National Honor Society did volunteer work, um, cleaning up highways on September thirtieth. And then they had the free college app day. So all these kids were filling out applications for free and sending them in. So yeah, that's what I have.
Awesome, thank you.
I think to jump in on the colleges and the schools, it's something that Elise has been working on and CLC's been working on. But the Commission of Higher Learning, um, which regulates the state colleges and the community, our tech, our two-year colleges, community colleges are now, have changed the requirements for teachers. They have to have a master's or eighteen credits. One of the reasons Scott Miller moved, was able to move out of the sociology class is Scott doesn't have the full eighteen credits, it'd be on his BA for sociology. But he's been teaching it for, college sociology for twenty years as well. They're no longer, the, uh, state colleges and the CLC's involved with that. They're no longer an honor experience in the area, you gotta have the full eighteen credits. He checked with U and they gave him credit for his experience in teaching it. So he's teaching through the U. Um, Elise is well aware, we've been in contact with CLC and the powers that be saying we've got teaching to teach in some of these classes for fifteen years. And now you're telling us because rules have changed. And this, the, the rule change has been coming for a while.
Yeah, like every couple of years, they bring it up, but then they
And then there's a waiver.
I think I was teaching college courses yet, but it seems like I asked it last fall, was at CSC if there's gonna be another waiver. And they said, no, we think they've done the fact, so.
And just, Scott has a, a master's in econ.
Yep.
And so you would, but they want a master's in the field that they're gonna teach.
But they don't, they don't follow suit with that on the college campuses. They have teaching assistants who have maybe a bachelor's or not even.
Not, sometimes not even.
Not even a bachelor's, teaching labs and
It's really all about money.
It is, it's a financial issue.
Well, if the two-year colleges have done this, it isn't gonna be long before the U does it too. They will follow suit.
I feel like the U has backed off on it, because I think initially it was all schools were going, but maybe you can correct me on that.
It's, it's all of the, um, the, so there, most of the colleges has followed suit, the U will not. They, they have said that, they have, they're in a different union than, it's union driven. And so um, it's not CLC driven or anything like that, it's union driven. And so they have made their decisions. The University of Minnesota kind of has their own separate unions, so they have made their choice on, on what they're doing. And so we're looking at, I'm looking at the courses that are available, that our teachers can continue to teach through them. They only allow, you know, they have certain ones open and other ones closed, so.
That's it, we just can't say we wanna teach econ through the U. They gotta have an opening in the program in order for us to do that.
And that happened with Scott last year, so that, we just decided to do that.
Is it psychology or sociology?
Psychology.
Oh, it's psychology, I'm psychology.
Suzanne teaches sociology.
Suzanne does sociology. And she's one that's done it for a long time through CLC and may not be able to in the future.
Yep.
That's all, yeah.
Okay, community education.
It's boring in my world. Okay, so we, let's see, where do I start? We had a, things are good. Our catalog comes out November-ish, November first-ish. There's printing backlogs, um, because some printing presses are closing down. And so we hope November first, but it might be fifth, sixth. Um, but it's at the publisher printer right now. And so there's all the fun things in there. Um, we just opened up our clothes closet. Um, I sent pictures out to the ISD one staff. But we have probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred articles of clothing that we bought. Um, everything from socks, underwear, t-shirts, sweats, leggings, gym shorts, sports bras, um, all in there. Uh, the, the counselors and Kelly um, all know kind of the plan. So um, teachers have been informed. Um, we're now gonna do a gobbler gear drive. Um, all of our clothes closets gonna be new except for gobbler gear. We're kinda like, you know, that can be used, um, gently. You, you feel like you buy a new t-shirt every year and it's maybe worn for a season. And so um, we're gonna do a gobbler gear drive at conferences this week. And so families can bring gobbler gear, drop it off and, um, and then we'll have that available to students as well. Um, and then, yeah. Um, one of our initiatives with community ed that were collaborations that we're working with is with the Aiken Youth Center. Um, and they just got word of confirmation for the forty thousand dollar grant that they wrote to Northland Foundation to hire a program director. So hopefully Mondays, Thursdays, Fridays, it will be housed out of First Lutheran. It is non-denominational, no religion associated with it, but it will be housed out of First Lutheran because there's just so much space there. And then also loaves and fishes operates out of there Mondays and Thursdays. So the kids will be able to get a free meal. Um, so our program director, we're hoping we can find someone so we can get the ball rolling by November first. And so community ed's partnership with that is to help find volunteers. Because we have a really good volunteer base, um, that we work with, with our, all of our Hday initiative. So it's kind of our plan with that. And so other than that, winter is, programming is all upon us and
Don't say the word winter, next semester.
You know.
Yeah, next season.
Might never happen there.
We're just probably gonna skip fall. Um, no, and all of, all the, you know, scheduling the gyms and basketball and wrestling and all that stuff is underway and so, yeah.
Good stuff. Okay, so any other report?
All right, I'm quick on the enrollment, we're down with five students, primary and junior, well, junior senior classes. There's a few bumps up and down throughout. Stars game one here, Rockland here, just pretty typical, um, start of the school year. We have a couple of students in the high school that have opted into the uh, online alternative program for various reasons, that's part of the decline there. But then they'll still be counted on our overall tally. If you look at that at the bottom of that report, so. Any questions on that or? Uh, last, what is, two weeks went out? Yeah, two weeks, or it was last Tuesday, no, two weeks gone, Tuesday, Wednesday. We had a meeting, the three of us went, three board members and myself went over to Crosby. Uh, Crosby's a great, great host, their, their foods class prepared supper for us and a meal for us. And we had that, and then we had a couple hour, hour and a half, two hour discussion with Crosby, talking about various topics. Uh, we talked a lot. But our community ed, they've heard good things about community ed. And our board has spoke very highly of, of the different things that we offer there. And uh, you know, kind of went back and forth, pros and cons and advice. Um, then we got into talking and, and I think this is, uh, you know, look at, and where are we going? What, what is our goal of, of these discussions with Crosby? I think it's been very, two very productive meetings, just kind of getting to know and finding out, you know, talking about some of the good programs they have and we have and sharing some ideas. Um, I do know there's been discussion or it's come up at board meetings about maybe down the road, we look at a combined high school. Which I, I don't know down the road, I can't predict that. So are we looking at with these meetings more of, right now to look at sharing programs? Um, example that comes up, and I, I believe this is true, I don't, I, I think this is a, all I said, but Crosby doesn't offer egg. We do, if we have an egg opening, could we, egg space, could we have Crosby kids come our way, take an egg class there? Machining class, you don't necessarily offer machining, but they had openings in machining, could we have students go over there? Which all sounds pretty easy, right? But there's some logistics with that. But I mean, those are things that, that can be done. Like I said, I need to know what the board is thinking, is that what we're looking at? And we talked a little about potentially pairing of maybe some sports, some activities. Never really got into that. Um, you know, if it's just programming, I think at some point we both boards, both districts met, we should get our principals involved. For more than that, then I guess we need to, need to have that discussion as well. But um, at the last meeting, we decided we're gonna continue to meet. With Dr. Scanlon and I have to connect to come up if we want to have our next meeting. They do have a, uh, operating referendum on the ballot here on November fifth. I think that might, regardless of how that goes for them, hopefully they're successful obviously. Um, but that could have an impact on maybe some potential things they have. We have, you know, I've shared with you, we're gonna have some budget cuts. We're gonna have to be making some tough decisions here after Christmas for ourselves, so. Is there some cost savings? That could be done by sharing some things, I don't know. Uh, if there, there could be, could some programs be saved? Are supported? You know, I guess it's, you know, if we, if we're swapping students, you know, if we're sending ten students over there for a program, they're sending ten back, it's kind of a wash in the, you know, it'd be a wash in the finances. Um, our business managers would have to figure out how, how that all plays out, how that works. But uh, boards of board, when I go on that, leads me to a discussion I had today with Kent and Jeff from ICS. You know, looking at, uh, what is it, we want them to have, they may be ready to bring it to us in our next work session, November sixth, I think it is. Yeah. What do we want from them? We want numbers for elementary school, elementary school and all their facilities, elementary school, high school and all their facilities. My, my concern is where does, where does the discussion, if, if the board's interested in pairing a high school, where does that go? And how does that impact the work we're trying to do now? And then I'm looking for some guidance from the board of what your thoughts are, or what you'd like to see from what we're gonna bring back to the, the next work session.
Um, I I think we need to be looking at the sharing of programs and the cost saving and that stuff. I don't necessarily think that we as a community are ready to be considering consolidation. When we've had such trouble getting support for singular alone. I don't know that we're ready to show them some giant project. I feel like if we start with our programs and cost sharing of staff. I mean, we, at that meeting, we talked about two, the sharing of staff when we get down to our three section. Um, high school, when we start moving that in, that staff sharing could be something we could do between districts. Um, so I think we need to be looking at it from that direction and not let consolidation come down the road if it comes. But not, it not be our plan, that would, I feel, derail our movement forward.
I feel like we, to scrape those conversations happen. I feel like we have a lot going on in our district right now. And to add to everybody's workload of trying to share programs and the logistics with that. When married no transportation is difficult, I think it's great this happened. But I feel like it should be put off on the back burner until we take care of our district first.
Would that be a, maybe even the pairing and sharing discussion?
Well, I mean, I guess that's up to the administrative team because that's, most of the work for that falls on all of you. And I feel like you have a lot going on right now in our own district with online school, college and schools, trying to build a new school. Student mental health, all of that stuff. It's, I mean, if it's something that you feel you could take on as an additional workload, I would support that. But at the same time, if you said you wanted to focus on what we have going on right now, I think I would support that a hundred percent. I think we should do what we're doing well instead of taking on too much at one time.
Well, I don't know if we, if we're quite, I'm not quite really ready to shut the door with Crosby, just like that. I think, I think these discussions have been healthy for the community. You know, we're, we're so close. Yet, you know, it just makes, I think there makes some sense to take a look at offering some things. If you look at egg and, and you know, machine, machine shop stuff. I think, you know, I know as Dan said, that's kind of, there's more to it than just, all right, we're gonna do that and then do that. But again, it's, you know, is it, is it, are we concerned about, you know, all this extra work? Or are we concerned about trying to, you know, offer product for our kids and our communities to, to improve on? So um, as I look at that, I, I look at those things too. I mean, the, the model that you look in for improvement has to, you have to look at change for improvement in order to make the model for improvement in whatever your organization you're in, right? I mean, that's the way I look at things in, in my world. So I think to, to see if, without looking, diving a little deeper into what those are, I don't know if we really know. You know, I mean, Dan says it's more, and I'm not gonna dispute Dan that there is more work to it, but I, I don't know what that workflow chart looks like. How much is, what do we gotta do here, what do we gotta do there, what do we gotta have in order for that to, to do, okay? And that's the way I look at those things, so. I like the discussion with them, they seem to be pretty eager. Crosby seemed to be pretty eager, the one that I was there, they're, they're just, you know, they, they seem very open to looking at some of that stuff. And that, it seems like that's where you look at, schools that get to a different area, areas, communities that come together more. Kind of starts in this area and it just, you know, you kind of just kind of see where it's gonna go on. It's kind of gonna find its own route in some things. But maybe we should also ask more people from community, more parents or more students and things like that. See what they're thinking, um, than just us. I mean, some of you are more in tune with the, because you have kids at school, right? And what do they want, type of thing. We have enrollment, we talked about, even in our athletics, we have areas where, I mean, who would think that wrestling was ever down in this town? I didn't thought that in my life, that wrestling would be to the numbers that we have. But we're showing a decline for whatever reason. And who would have thought that basketball would have went so high? And, and we have a lot of basketball players, but I don't know why. I guess that's just the way, maybe that's just the way this certain body of kids are right now. But um, so maybe there's things there that, because sometimes a lot of athletics come together and mold that, those communities too. Or activities, should I say, not necessarily football, but activities maybe. They mold that more so also, so. I, I just like it because, you know, to start talking and listening to more stuff, okay? So that's just my consensus on it. And I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying.
So I've attended both of the meetings. And I think that it is wise for us to continue to meet with Crosby Ironton. I think that there are places where we can collaborate. And in those places that we would collaborate would strengthen both of our communities. Um, I think the notion of having a combined school district is many, 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 many years down the road. And I'm not saying it will never happen, I'm just saying that it's not gonna happen anytime soon. And, but I do think that there are places where we can collaborate with one another and share some expenses and hopefully, you know, they're in the same predicament that we're in. You know, the rural community, I mean, the predicament we're in is the same as it is everywhere in the state. So we're not unique to anybody, so. So my, my thought is we need to continue to meet and collaborate and see where it takes us.
When I think about it, I think about the
When I think about it, I think about the relationship that our community's hospitals have, where they have joined services in some areas, and they definitely compete in other areas. But I think when they have pooled their resources in the areas where they collaborate, they have been especially financially helpful. And it has nurtured both of those businesses and both of those communities, and so I think that there certainly is a model, it's unusual for our two hospitals, anywhere, nowhere else in the state has that. And I think that it could be a good model to consider with our schools too, because we do need to be more forward-thinking. And so I do think it's important to keep having conversations, just, you know, each district identifying what are their strengths and what are their needs, and doing a crosswalk to see, is there somewhere where we can cross and help and make sense financially to do that? I think, I think it makes sense to do that. I think historically, everybody always thinks of the competing athletics, right, and they're a rival. This isn't about that, to me, this is about working smarter, not harder, and trying to, you know, balance the budgets, right, for both entities, so. I would support continuing to have conversations.
Well, I rubbed in the victory for the football team.
Good for you.
Her sentence.
Sorry. So, I- Wait a second, I think I said-
I attended one of the meetings, I think there was, there was good dialogue. I think we need to continue having the conversations and keep working. There's, with both schools getting smaller, there's potentially a good opportunity to maintain some of the services that really attract students. Provide excellence to our schools. If you get too small, then all those things end up getting cut, or could potentially, like college and schools. Or, we're not talking about that, but those are, those extra things, and robotics programs, and some sports even, and you name it, so. I think keep a conversation, I think we're nowhere near to the point of putting it on the board agenda for a vote or anything like that, but I think we should, you asked kind of a number of things there, Dan, that you were looking for, so, I mean, I think you said four different things almost what you want. So, I mean, as far as like-
Go back to the-
ICS and like design, I mean, let's get back to that. Maybe, we, we need a list prior to that meeting of, of the different options. We're not talking about, I think we need to have, continue the conversation with the crowd. They, they are good, they're beneficial, there's good opportunity. You know, I will say, you, we've met twice, Rock Ridge and to create Rock Ridge, they met like 15 times over five years, and what brought them together was an $80 million donation. And that's what sealed the deal and brought together. We don't have anything like that, but it took five years.
We would accept that.
We would, would you accept that?
Yes, I would.
Yes, I know that, yeah, the-
Yeah, anyone listening, not saying no.
We just can't do this, about 80 million, yes, we can do that for that, but, but that didn't come overnight. That took, that was many meetings, many discussions with many entities over a long period of time, and we, that's like, I don't know, can't even say a cart before the horse, it's a cart before, I don't know, that's way out there, so. Before we even get into any of that, yeah, we need to talk about stuff, we have an elementary school that's in bad shape, and we need to keep the focus on that, what that project turns into. And I don't see that as having any impact on the other stuff we're talking about. Times need elementary schools, so. Crosby just redid their elementary school. I think I sent you, Dan, you know, that, there's a lot of, I'd like to learn more about from School Board Association, on different designs, on how districts that have consolidated are designed. And I don't know a lot about districts all across the state and what they did, that'd be good kind of research project. Yeah, I also told, you know, if you're having kids, you know, to share services, maybe you got to look at going with like a trimester program. The kids have four classroom units a day, so you have longer class periods, and I have an employee that, he went to, I think it's Champlin Park, it's designed that way, so they just have four sessions a day. He said it's the continuity, he says fantastically, chemistry-
That's how I graduated out of Aiken, we were on the block schedule.
Yeah, so, so you have a chemistry lecture, and you do the lab in the same time period. I mean, from an academic standpoint, it works really good, there's less catch-up, he thought, between classes, between-
Yeah, that's, there's, there's pros and cons of every scheduling, you know, and a lot of schools that were on the block schedule, I'm sure, I think it's the reason Aiken went away from it, is it tends to cost a little bit more. Sort of budget cutting time, and there's, but, yeah, there's a lot of pros with the block schedule and trimester system.
Yeah, so anyway, good discuss, I'd like to know more about that and the implications of that, like you just threw out, I didn't know that. But, that might accommodate, I don't know if consolidated schools, if they, if any of them do that, or what they've done, so. There's a ton of things to look into before we move some to a vote with the board, so, that's, that's all I have to say about it.
Anyone else?
I, as far as ICS is concerned, I'd like to see some numbers from them.
Is what we're like, that's, there was a discussion today, so ICS, let me cut you off, sorry. ICS, they're working with the architects right now, when we did the space study with, or the meeting on space, the areas needed with the principals here two weeks ago, they were working on that, so the question I got today is, what do we want numbers for on our November 6th? They need to be, you know, they want to know tomorrow, so they can be working on them and try to have, but then, try to have them, so do we want numbers? Numbers on, if we move everything out there from the elementary school through the high school, through all our fields? Do we want to look at numbers on, then do we want to have that broken down, so we can look at numbers, what it costs? So we got to figure out the cost, and then we go back, go to the elders and say, okay, if we build this and it's, I don't know, $50 million, $50 million, or whatever. This is what the cost breakdown is for the taxpayers. Then we back and say, well, we want that elementary and a high school, this is going to be, now we have to $150,000, $140,000, whatever, pick a number. This is what the cost is back to the taxpayers, if we want to figure out elementary school and a bus garage, or elementary school and fields. It all, it, every variation changes, changes the numbers, so I guess there-
I almost feel like we're getting the cart before the horse. Because I feel like we need to find out what is the threshold in our community for a tax increase. I mean, if I go buy a car, I'm going to go with a bank first and say to them, how much do I have to spend?
At the same time, you have the basic model, the next best model, to the luxury model available to choose from. Like, is it naive of me to think, why can't we have numbers for all of the above? You know, starting with the basic elementary school, and then adding on each thing, plus the cost of maintaining our current buildings if we weren't to do anything. Is it naive of me to think they could provide all of those different options to us at that November 6th meeting?
I think they could provide them to us, can they have them by November 6th? I, probably, but I don't want to commit to that, so, I think that's what they're looking for today, what is, what is. So we went in, in Longwood, Jen said elementary only would be one option?
I feel like by November 6th, I'd like to see what the elementary is, we did put it as our top priority as a board, so no matter what, that's on that, that ask, that wish list has that elementary, so even if you give us the base of your elementary alone, you know, and then that's, then they can work on the other projects beyond that, but at least we have an idea of where-
Would you agree that elementary would be our prime number one priority?
I thought we did.
Okay, and then number two? I do elementary and high school, elementary and bus garage?
Well, I feel like a bus garage just becomes a part of an elementary and high school, right? You don't send your transportation across town still. I guess that was my thought, we don't want to build a hospital without a laundry room, so, I mean, a school without a bus garage.
I think it would be good to have a cost of a bus garage, even if it was just an elementary, so our bus garage is-
Well, and our bus garage is top priority in that meeting's schedule too, I mean, it doesn't fit buses, it doesn't have correct bathrooms. It is a high priority in just what we would do with our current one.
And buses get hit by trains.
Yeah, yeah. At the farm, they might get flooded, so let's not think that maybe we're out of-
I wouldn't like-
Exactly, there's plenty, yeah, right around, there's plenty of-
I'm okay, I'm okay with getting all the numbers, but I want to see what is the cost of building new versus maintaining what we have.
And what we, well-
We have the deferred maintenance plan.
Yeah, well, if we look at the facility study, we did two years ago, it was about 16 million then, I don't know what, I don't, we, we all know costs have gone up, so are we closer to 20 million? Are we 18 million? So we, we kind of have that as a guide, as far as utilities or maintaining new versus old? Yeah, I don't know, Halloween, is there a formula for that?
There is a formula.
Okay.
I sat in a class at MSBA, and I think, and I wrote it all down, so somewhere I have the formula for that, I will look for it.
Well, I can, if there is one, then I should have, so. Right now, I got, well, first priority, elementary only, elementary, high school, both of those would have a bus garage figured in. Do we want fields and all that with the-
Yeah, if you're going to move the high school and elementary to one location, then, yeah, all the fields, from the football field-
We can price it, there's no reason we add the package.
And then I think-
Baseball fields, softball fields.
Do they have a way to give us an estimate of what we could sell the land for if we vacated our fields?
Don't find out, it's not, not likely to be sold, but I have never, I think I've seen anywhere we're going to dollar them all attached to it.
I think another option we'd look at that we have discussed, if you're, is it elementary with maybe some additional athletic community space?
Like the wellness center?
Yeah, so like a, yeah, with a wellness center attached, so, and maybe make it like UMD's Wellness Center, no, joking, I just tweeted that yesterday. I don't think we can have that, but, we wouldn't look for that.
Anyway, did meet, I'll be honest, the principals were, had a wish list going, kind of what they'd really like to see. Much of this, I give her, I think we had a wellness center in there connecting, part of the gyms connecting the elementary and the high school.
Yeah, I think, I think we did, yeah.
Yeah, so, part of it is, once we get a number, then we figure out what, decide what the community can afford or wants to do. And then some of the things that the principals, and we had sat, not just principals, but the team that was in that meeting. And we got to say, well, this knocks half a million dollars, not half a million, but knocks $100,000 off the top ticket price, do we really need that? So, right now, it's kind of building what we really want, and then, once we start running the numbers, then maybe we can say, oh yeah, we can afford all that, maybe, maybe.
I think we would also need to kind of know what, what part we can sell off. Not only on our current sites, but the housing project area, because we're going to need to know that for marketing purposes too.
I think our, our current property, we have no idea where the school could be built, so having any discussion about selling houses and some of that.
No, we did, we identified-
Oh, I know, but that's not, there's, this, tell you have your soil borings and wetland analysis.
Yeah, we don't have some control.
No, they haven't done any of that.
Oh.
Nope, so they don't even know where a school could actually fit yet. Looking at the-
I thought that we did pay for that when we bought it. We did pay for some soil borings, I recall, on different locations on that property.
That sounds familiar.
I thought you did that too.
They did borings for the tennis courts.
No, I was, we paid, I think, externally. When FJJ were here, right?
I think so, don't know.
I have, the ICS had a word for any soil borings.
I feel, oh. I feel like there were.
It would be in the original purchase agreement.
With FJJ?
Yeah, well, that's Jeff, he was definitely in, I'll turn again.
Since the location is where it sits near water, there'll be some potential cultures, cultural significance there. So, I'm just going to let you guys know that, from my experience of what I do daily, that there's potential of, there'll be some findings in there, so they'll probably have to, they'll, there's going to have to be eyes on that a little bit, so.
Yeah.
But you're not going to want to find anything after you do it.
In the last, like, school design planning process, the big ticket items are, that really impact the overall cost, or, or things like, like wellness center, athletic facilities, they could track, auditoriums, you have to decide if you want that, swimming pools, obviously. Those, those are kind of the major, like, optional things, you're, you're not going to cut that, you, you know your classroom space, but then there's these other, other things, and depending what community support and what people want, that those have a huge impact on the final cost.
So right now, we want, we're going back, just so you have some tell ICS, elementary only with bus garage, elementary high school with bus garage, elementary high school with all fields. And then be the, and then our cost, and then tax breakdown.
So, as you look at tax breakdown, I don't know how fast that can be done.
I don't know either.
So I have no idea what, how they do that, but, and again, sometimes I think budget-wise is, and it goes back to your car scenario. If I buy a vehicle for 20,000, 30,000, 40,000, 50,000, 60,000, I know exactly how much I'm going to pay, because I can go right on my computer and go into a calculator that figures that out, same with houses, if I want 100,000, 200,000, 100,000, I can go exactly in there and figure out what it's going to cost me. So, is there similar formulas that ICS has to know? Well, again, with our tax base, that it's if, if we spend 20 million, 30 million, 40 million, 50 million.
That's what elders will do.
Yeah.
And then what elders will do is, we get to that point, whatever we decide, and you can do a couple of things, but you punch in your property tax ID number, or maybe your district address, either one. I'm not sure on the address, but then it'll tell you what your property's valued at and what that would cost based on their-
So we can do it right now?
No, we have to elders.
We did, we're almost, we're almost-
Elers will need to know what, we need to know dollar.
Yeah, so, tell them what.
Yeah.
Tell them.
Yeah.
30 million, 40 million, 50 million?
No, oh, I see, you just said do a dollar.
I mean, it's just, I'm talking, you know, big picture, high level budgeting wise, because I can, if, if that's available, I'd love to plug it in mine, you know, and see what they're at. I, I don't, but that's just me thinking, so I might be wrong, but do you go through an exercise with consultants and paid consultants for all this design and all this stuff and talks to architects? Or do we kind of know that, well, based on some of this, is where the, some of the costs are going to land?
Well, that, that's my comment about determining the threshold first. Because our community has a threshold for what they are able, not what they're willing, what they're able to pay in an increase.
Because we've just stretched this thing, as I sat here and listened, we stretched this thing pretty good.
What do you mean by that?
Well, we were adding fields, and we were adding bus garages, and we were adding high schools, and we just kept adding and adding and adding.
You can, yeah, we can, we can delete all that just down to a bare bones square box school too, with the access rule.
But if we know how much each of these things on our wish list costs, like in an à la carte sort of menu, then we can piece together what our community's threshold is based on what our needs are and what gives us the best bang for our buck, but if we don't know how much it costs to the field out there, we potentially lose the opportunity to pair that with the elementary school, right?
We, last time- We, last time, we hired Morris Leatherman, once we established, like, the numbers that Dan's looking for, we then hired Morris Leatherman to do a survey of our constituents based on the thresholds of those dollar amounts. And those results were consistent with our votes, the voter turnout. And so I think that there will be an opportunity, but like, for instance, I'm currently shopping for a vehicle, and when I told my husband how much I wanted to spend, he was like, no way. And I said, here, look at all the prices, and he went, oh, yeah, I guess they do cost that much. So I don't want to go to the taxpayers and say, yeah, I go fund ten million, when that's literally going to get us nothing.
That doesn't fix our current system.
Right, so it's like, we do, we do have to have some sort of a base, and then we're going to have to do some education on what that spend means, right, and for them to be able to make that decision.
So, you know, as far as the things, we had a discussion about an auditorium, right now, it's completely in the plans. Swimming pool, we said no. A few other things like that, but how many extra classrooms beyond what we think we'll need in case we have a bubble come through? Do we have one extra classroom, two, or do we have two bubbles come through, you know? We talked about how probably, depending how soon something would be built, we could be tight in high school for a year or two as our, you know, eighty-five, ninety kid classes come through, but then they're going to be followed up by sixty to hopefully seventy kid classes. So then, you know, we wouldn't need as much space to be overbuilt for two years to have, be overbuilt for the, you know, those are some of the discussions we have, but.
This is where, this is where, when you're starting with the elementary, this is where you're, you're really almost going to follow with your high school unit, because if we build and expand our elementary school and build, because it'll be state of the art, let's face it, it will be, no matter what we build, it's going to be brand new, it's going to be shiny, everything. It's going to have a wonderful campus, and it will increase enrollment. I don't know how it cannot increase enrollment. People will want to go to this new school, because whenever you do a new building in anything, you're going to, you're doing that to increase a level of business or a level of it is, it's just a natural thing that comes with it.
Oh, great.
And so we built this thing, and then all of a sudden, we go, and then you go over there to the high school. So you're going to, you're, and just for everybody to just think of, that's just a, that's just the way that I think people think, and I think that's what would happen. That's just my, again, I give you my, I'll just going to tell you my opinions on that stuff, but I think that, that's the, the danger or the good problem, whatever it is, right? I think that's how you look at it.
I was going to say, my family members had some conversations with people from Purim recently about that, and they talked about how it took forever for their community to pass building that beautiful school that they have. And as soon as that finally was built, then the hospital adds on.
Yeah.
Then all that housing is there, and the town just took off.
I haven't been there, I, I just drove by there two weeks ago, and I went, Kay and I went, hasn't been like years since we've ever, no, it wasn't that long ago since we, I mean, I travel a lot up there, I've had family up there.
Yeah.
Can't believe it.
So I do agree also that we get a new school, and I think we will definitely draw other families. I think it'll bring in housing, the hospital just did that expansion, plan on hiring how many? Hundred more people or something like that? I think that, I think that it will, and I also agree that once they're in that new school, they're not going to want to come to the high school afterwards. So that, you know, gives you probably eight years to be figuring out the next school.
That's why my comment, if, if, if the two communities built a high school, it would be a problem of this state because of the location. It would just be, it would be a wonderful campus to have it here. But again, we can only afford so much, I know the communities, I know our tax base, I know what, what everybody does for living, I know the, the economics, so is that realistic? If, if, if we can just do it and say, it is realistic, just trust us, because everything will fall in place, which it probably will, but boy, it's a, it's a huge risk, that's what you deal with, so.
Yeah, and it might, it might take, it's, I don't know, how many referendums did Grand Rapids just do for the elementary? Four? More than.
Morris was like twelve years long.
Ten?
Yeah.
Ten referendums?
So it's, it's.
They weren't all failures, they got that elementary school first.
Yep.
And then worked their way right through those remaining ones.
So I have three, the three different options with, you know, elementary bus garage, elementary high school bus garage, and everything with all the fields. We'll talk to I C S tomorrow, I'll find out what their thoughts are on when's a good time to do a Morris Leatherman survey, if that's something, I'm not, not committed to it, if that's something we want to do, or if they, I know that's who they've worked with in the past, I don't know, they have a different way, or if that's who they recommend going through. I do know they said that they felt they were pretty accurate, and, well, you guys were part of that, pretty accurate with where the community was when we, when we couldn't pass building one the last time around, so there's a little bit of credibility there with them.
I remember the surveys expensive, expensive though.
That's what, that's been the one thing I C S has mentioned, there is a cost to that.
My, my question is, what are you going to do when you get that information? If it's a duplicate of the last survey? You know, it's kind of a rhetorical question to the rest of this board.
No, I mean, you pay and you get the information you don't want, and it's still what you asked for.
Yeah.
I think things have changed a lot in the economy since that last survey was done. That was almost, it was nine years ago, around ten years ago, so I think a lot of things have changed. And, and we may get the survey results back, and we might not like what it tells us, but it will tell us if we need to scale up or scale down.
Okay, so I think I got an answer for I C S. If I move on real quick to Costin Lobby Group, I really don't have anything new there, other than I'm going to be presenting to the county economic board, I forget the exact name, not until November though. I talked to the Costin Group, they don't need a, they'll, Costin Group, they don't need an answer from us, they're working kind of behind the scenes right now, they don't want an answer from us before January one. That's what we're going to do, I guess I, you know, if, if the county and the city, and those are big yes at this point, because I don't have any indication, they will, but is the board interested in, let's say they come through, it's going to cost us ten thousand five hundred dollars for the years, is the board interested, board willing to do that? And then if I need to, I can come back and say, well, this is what we got from the other groups, so. I guess I would like, I don't think I need a motion at this point, unless you want to.
No, I can, I can report, I was at that meeting, I was very impressed with what their, their offerings, what their strategies are. They came very prepared, they're highly intelligent. I was super impressed, you know, going through all of that, they answered very tough questions that we had. I think that they presented six or seven of their options of things that they have already kind of calculated. They identified who their target audience is and what strategies, how elections can impact and change those results. And so it was very clear that they're very serious, and I do, I will admit at first, when the proposal came forward, it was like, oh my god, another spend, but I think that it would be an excellent value for the return that I think that we would get.
I was also at that meeting, and I went to the meeting with a different perspective, because I was a registered lobbyist, and I know what it all entails, and, and I was very impressed with them. I was impressed with their ability to think strategically about how they would approach this based on what the election turnouts were, and, and to be perfectly frank and honest, I don't think we're going to get the funding that we need to do the infrastructure without their help.
I, I don't think so.
I went into it thinking it was, we needed to help us get I triple R B funds. A lot of the meetings talked about legislative actions, beyond I triple R B, that they would lobby for, could lobby for M D F, so. I was really impressed. Sitting back and thinking about the conversations that we had with them, it's just interesting to put it all together that, that's how government works. Look at the big picture of it, but, yeah, they, but, again, I would recommend, I'll obviously recommend, it's just something to think of if the hospital has committed, going in on a fourth of the, of the, of the cost, and, and we thank them for that, and thank the hospital board. I don't know, you know, if the city and the county come through, it'd cost us all ten thousand five hundred dollars. I'm working really, you know, that, you know, a lot of talks about, you know, that you build a school, they're going to come. We have a hospital set up for that, with our project, there, there very easily could be housing attached to that. The city and the county both seem interested in that, so I think they're approaching it more as a, not only a school build, or school project, but really a community project, and I think that's.
It's an economic development project, is what it is.
And I think that's kind of resonating with some people, so.
I think that we gave you a motion and approval in August to move forward with this before you went to that Rams thing, so I don't think you need to, we already did that.
We may need it, depending on what the dollar amount comes down to, we'll need a appeal, but I don't feel that at this point, so.
Sure.
But that's the update I have from the Costin Lobby Group, so. And one more thing, and that's just Black Earth, Peter Lowell and Amanda Lowell, they do a golf outing every year, and they put the funds towards a project, and Peter, as you know, has been very instrumental in our kitchen, in our student kitchen, and we have an old electric commercial stove, Peter's commercial kitchen's now gone to gas. He would like to use the profits from that golf, golf fundraiser to replace our electric stove with a gas one. He's got one picked out, he's talked with a few local vendors, contractors who would help install it. I got Steve Snyder right now working with our, to make, we got to change out the hood, not change it out, change it, from, move it from a gas to a, or electric to a gas hood. And then to get gas line around there, we located that there's, gas line's running on fire, so it's not going to be a huge cost to get it connected, so. Just, once again, a community coming through, and, and, you know, Peter and Amanda have been very supportive of our, of our, of our program and the food's program, and just a heads up, I don't think.
That's really nice.
It's going to cost us minimal to get that swapped out, so thanks to them.
Well, that's excellent, I appreciate that, I had, it seems like every time the tournament is, I have something going on.
So.
Get your priorities.
I know, I know, I don't like the golf.
I was going to say, are you just a bad golfer, so you plan stuff?
No, I'm not a bad golfer at all, I just live on.
I can't make it, no game.
I golfed so much in the nineties. Before, one more thing I did want to say about the project thing, if we're down in interruption, I'm going to do this.
Sorry.
Just kidding. If you look at both, you know, we're, we kind of throw a lot, we would probably need to, and you mentioned it, we probably need to just kind of drill down a little bit, and then just maybe go and actively, maybe try to bring somebody in to organize us as far as, you know, here's our strengths, you know, and kind of go back and forth and write those down, so we kind of know. And then we can maybe start marrying those, those things out there, and what do we need help with, and this, so, maybe the next time we get together, we should talk about, get that a little bit more.
I know a perfect person, I will ask her if she would maybe volunteer to do that.
Good, I had something, I talked about, it is happening outside.
Yeah.
Facilitator come in, but then it goes right back, well, how much you want to spend on this, or is there a cost of that?
Yeah, let's just see what it is, and then see if Jen can play for it, so.
That's all I have.
Jen's going to do it.
But I did, I did tell about Crosby and Aiken sharing, and I said, would, would you build a swim team for the schools? And he said, absolutely. So if we move this way, we can have a swim team, a C I A swim team, and we know a coach it. Because we don't, he was swimming at Calid, and a group of women were there and said, are you an Olympian? So, I mean, he's passionate about it.
And he said, yes, I know he is.
He slept in the Holiday Inn last night.
He did use that line once.
Well, my last conversation with.
Upcoming meetings, October twenty seventh, personnel, November fifth, safety, November sixth is a special school board meeting.
That would be a work session at this point, unless something comes up.
November thirteenth, policy committee, eighteenth, school board meeting, November twenty seventh, personnel committee meeting. Is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any, any comments, motion carried.